I enjoyed every bit of it. It is, it's a great board.
But they're, they're back in office.
Yep. Yeah. Uh, Flip. When Flip left is when, uh, Tony came on. When the economy got bad, Flip went to Mobile. Is he back? Oops. Well. Worked out real tight in 'oh six, oh eight, oh nine. And he had to go over to Mobile and make a look. And then he served, he served on here a long time. He's a good guy.
Yeah.
Good sports number, good guy. I really, he's a, we've, we've had some outstanding board members. I really.
Tearing it down.
And everyone I've served with has been outstanding.
I used to go to Gene's and have a workout there.
Hart Miller, Hart Miller is probably one of the most controversial people in Walton County, but he was a good board member. And it's a pleasure to serve him. So he sure likes that paper, I thought. Letter to the editor.
It was all hollowed out. And they drove the podcast for the bridge. It cracked.
So where are you doing this?
Warmer cringe.
Mr. Warmer Cringe?
Going through to.
I was here three and a half years ago. You know, block that cell.
Could be.
It is hot.
Could be.
They don't rebar and they work in.
Sales.
Step on, step first.
I like your show.
We got all that. We had to raise the slab.
No code, like six or seven degrees.
How long you been at the?
Twenty two. I've been with the president for. I left, uh, the management club. I flattered around about four years. Management club two years, worked as coin laundry company for about a year. I better find some benefits.
She got benefits, don't she?
Yeah, I've got her benefits. I don't ever like having those things on my job.
That's all with his thing.
He's going back to my place a lot of the.
They're always. I'll give you a couple of years. You been on the floor.
Well.
You're actually in pretty good shape right there.
This is a great place.
I'm on it till the twenty sixth and y'all get it. Just February, sometime February next year, I think. It's my turn on that. I'll watch you how you do. You need to be watching how you do. I've, I plan on staying.
You know we are.
We're just. Replace the.
Yeah. We ask best care.
That'd be fun.
Anyway, it's a great. You don't have to do anything, Karen. Karen, how are you? Good. John coming? We used to have an outline, you know, tell us how we supposed to run a meeting. And that's why I mess up from time to time since Mr. Dykes does not assist me.
I, I do use the rope to hang yourself a little bit.
Do y'all still have that outline?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Verzis like to have a copy of it. I prefer not, that way if I mess up, it's okay, right? Mr. Carpenter, how you doing tonight?
Just fine, sir.
I guess it's time to get started. We do appreciate each and every one being at the October twenty fifth, twenty eighteen, Walton County's only Board of Adjustment. If you would, please stand as we have the indication followed by the police. Charlie, if you would.
Dear Heavenly Father, please help those in need that are displaced by the hurricane, as were a lot of our friends and neighbors have been. Please help us here tonight to guide our thoughts in, uh, doing what's best for our residents in our county in these decisions we're about to make. Amen.
Amen.
Let's live.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the ruler for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. I'd like to thank this opportunity to welcome our two new board members. We really do appreciate y'all willing to serve on this board. Mr. Jack Huggins Junior is replacing Phil Anderson. He is at large. He serves all five county commissioners. Now, Mr. David Henderson, Mr. David Henderson is replacing Mr. Phil Fletcher. He's in District One, serving, uh, been appointed by Mr. Phil Chapman. We do appreciate y'all being here and look for y'all's contribution. The only problem that I have, we have two architects now. And you know how controversial they get. So we may have to split them up, I don't know. But we. Huh? Yeah, we, we need to do that, don't we? But we appreciate it. Thank y'all very much. Phil Fletcher was the longest serving board member. Well, right at, um, the longest he was in the act, he served the board very well in the years that he did. He was a great board member and Phil Anderson served his term. And we appreciate his service. He did extremely well. We'd like to thank Karen for the hard work she does and our secretary throughout the months. We appreciate it. Ms. Hayward Dykes, thank you for what you do for the board and the other departments heads that is here. We do not have the legal counsel for the county. She don't fit. Huh?
Yes, she's absent tonight.
She's not with us, so that's, we don't need her anyway, do we?
We're on our own tonight.
Okay, well, we will, we will hire out ours to you if, if you need some legal advice.
Thank you.
First item on the, wait a minute. Mr. Dykes, do you have any news?
No, no new updates. I will, uh, inform the board that we did receive an appeal on the matter that, uh, that those, I believe you were absent, Mr. Johnson, but, uh, the one that we had at the TDC, the Red Bar Magnificent, uh, Jeff, you may recall it.
The trees?
Yes, sir. That one, that, 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 uh, that order's been appealed, so. Uh, but we have not received any new decisions or, uh, on the, on the pending appeals that are.
I mean, we have now.
I would say probably six to seven that are outstanding. Three of those are new, four of them will probably have been sitting in the queue for at least a year and a half, year, year and a half.
Well, maybe the judge will get around making a decision. We hope so.
That's the hope, yes, sir.
November meeting is what day in November? The nineteenth, that's on Wednesday, Tuesday, or Monday? November nineteenth. We have, uh, it's the fourth month, fourth Thursday of each month's up November and December. So November will be on a Monday, November the nineteenth.
Yes, sir, and we had planned to have this room available for that meeting. However, our relocation to, uh, the Freeport Commons Building in Freeport, uh, has been moved up a week. And they expect this room to be under construction on that day. Uh, so I would, uh, respectfully ask that we move the meeting to the Dufeniac, uh, courtroom.
Well, sure. We'd like to have that. That's permanent, right?
Uh, I'd like to request it for this specific meeting. Uh, it's up to the board where y'all meet. Now, we will have new, uh, meeting facilities in the Freeport office, uh, that we can utilize also, but that won't be available to us until, uh, December fourteenth.
Motion to have the November meeting in the Walton County Courthouse in Dufeniac?
Motion to have the November the nineteenth meeting in the Walton County Courthouse in Dufeniac.
Second.
Second.
All favor eye?
Aye. Thank you.
That gets you home a little quicker, won't it?
Yeah, it does.
At this time, we ask that each and every person here tonight that plan to speak before this board either on any issue. If you would, please stand, raise your right hand and swear that the testimony you give is the truth to the best of your knowledge.
Do you all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
First item on the agenda is the Carrie Varance, Varance, uh, Bonnie Perry. Hang on a minute.
Sir, we have a request to continue this item to November nineteenth.
How many are we going to continue?
Uh, we're going to continue, we're going to continue two of the published items and table one of those. And I have one more item for you to consider, uh, for purposes of protecting the applicant's advertising. Uh, the first item, number one, we're requesting that to be continued to November nineteenth, um, at the Dufeniac Springs Courthouse at five P M.
Are there any others, or you want to deal one at a time, or you want to group them together?
We can.
Let's group them.
Okay. Number eight, uh, our attorney has, our county attorney has asked us to continue that item, uh, the final order amendment to the same meeting, November nineteenth, in the Dufeniac Springs Courthouse at four, five P M.
Are that the only two?
Those are the two. Um, and then if we could deal, we're going to ask for number seven to be tabled. If they choose to bring it back, it can be re-advertised.
But not continue.
Not continue. Those are the two continuances of.
Okay, let's deal with those two. Motion to continue Perry Varance, item number one and number eight.
Yes, sir, number one and number eight.
Yes, sir.
Sir, I apologize. Uh, I came from Atlanta to put in about this number one, uh, claim, and, uh, this is the second time continuous only, I believe, that's been first, and I came down here for it, and I don't, uh, don't know why we're being continued, I mean, is it, uh?
Mr. Carpenter, why is it being continued if this is the second time, why is it?
Is it the request of the applicant? I'm not sure why they're asking.
The emails.
There's the applicant here.
They are, we are requiring them to produce a survey to dimension what they, what the setback actually is from constructed structures and to dimension what they're actually asking for. We don't have a survey on this one, and they have not gotten a survey yet. So that's the reason for the request to continue.
Sir, come up and state your name for the record so we can get you, if you would, please.
My name is Daniel Tompkins. Uh, I am the, uh, next door neighbor.
We, uh, we deeply regret that we're having to postpone this again. We understand the hardship this has caused you, I guess, twice now. But however, before they come before us, we have asked, this board has asked many times that they have the adequate information to provide us so we can have the right information to make a decision.
Yes, sir.
Without that survey, we can, we, if, if they were, if they came here tonight to hear it and they didn't have that survey, we will not hear it. Cause we can't really hear a variance without knowing exactly what they're asking for.
Yes, sir.
It wouldn't be justice to you, the neighbors, or anyone else.
We, we provided a survey of our property which showed an encroachment, so.
Are you for it or against it?
I'm against it. Can I, may I ask a question?
I really don't want to get into the discussion that until we start discussing it. I mean, we're just trying to get him to, you know, to understand that we've continued it. And we don't really need to get into, right, Mr. Hayward?
Yeah, I mean, the board has discretion. Uh, also, I don't, I don't know what, uh, Mr. Tompkins', uh, view is, but I mean, the board can obviously can, if, if, the intent of the board is to continue it, you can, you can advise the applicant, this will be the last continuance, that it will be heard one way or the other at the November meeting. That way we can bring it to some finality, but, uh, I agree, you probably shouldn't get into the facts on whether or not he's for or against it at this point.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I don't know that I need a survey to know that this thing is sitting on the property line and doesn't look very attractive in the setback.
Well, I do. And I think if we make it a survey, if we make a decision without a survey, I just don't think.
Can I make one comment?
That's the way we need to say.
Can I make one comment on that? Is, that is, I believe that a, a certified survey of our property showing encroachment was provided to staff. So, other than that, I'm done.
We have a motion to continue, we will, we would like to. Mr. Carpenter, I think we're going to address this and on a, let's just go ahead and address this on an individual basis. We continue this with a, with a understanding that applicant, it's like Mr. Hayward Dykes said, our attorney advised us, this would be the last continuance, you know, that they would get.
I understand, and one of our concerns about this is the fact that it does possibly encroach on the neighbor's lot. The building that they're asking the variance, uh, to be approved for, to allow to remain, may actually encroach on the neighbor's lot, and it may be this gentleman's property.
Well, we definitely need a survey, we definitely need them to be here, and we definitely need to be the last time.
Because the applicant.
Now, there's a, if there, if it's an encroachment, it, then it gets into a code enforcement, is that correct?
You can't get a variance to allow something to exist on someone else's property.
Has the code enforcement been there?
Not yet.
I think they need to be advised to be there, cause.
This, this is, um, a result of code enforcement. That they, uh, referred, um, the applicant to us to request, um, they gave them the option to apply for a variance. And, um, therefore, they came and they made an application. So this is a result of a code enforcement case.
Mr. Dykes, if they fail to show up at the next time, code enforcement needs to take their, uh, steps in finding those individuals for the encroachment or how we going to enforce that if it is such a situation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the status of the code enforcement case is, if any, I mean, do they have a open case?
It's pending.
I'm not sure that a notice of violation has been issued in an effort to work it out. At code enforcement, they directed them to plan to apply for a variance. Once we got the application, it's inconsistent with what we believe to be is an encroachment. And that's when we requested them to get the survey to prove that what they're asking for can actually be granted.
Right.
Um, but we believe the encroachment actually exists on the neighbor's property.
And as Mac pointed out earlier, I mean, you know, this board is somewhat limited. You can't, you know, authorize an encroachment onto somebody else's property, so, you know, if they get that survey, there may not even be a variance to consider.
But if they don't get the survey, then we ask that code enforcement starts, you know, their process.
Yeah, they'll do what they're, they need to.
Of finding it, not let this thing continue. Look it up. Motion to continue November the nineteenth in Dufeniac.
This is just for the Perry variance?
Perry variance.
Motion to continue.
Second.
Second.
All favor eye?
Aye.
May?
May.
Why? If you don't mind us, if you don't mind me asking.
It's a five foot setback and there's a big shed built in, a permanent shed. It's not a temporary shed, it's a permanent shed with concrete tile roof and a whole nine yards.
I, I, again, I would recommend, let's not get into the facts of the case in case.
I was just asking you to.
I understand.
I'm just trying to, I'm not, look, I'm just, I'm not putting nobody on the spot, nothing like that, I just wanted, if I miss something, that's all.
I, I don't need a survey.
Okay. Let's go to the item number eight. We're going to take a, uh, motion to, uh, continue that one to November nineteenth also.
Yes, sir.
Motion?
Motion to continue number eight.
Second.
To the November nineteenth meeting.
Second.
Second.
All favor eye? Number three, Huckabee, variance.
Uh, you want to take number seven tabling?
Pardon me?
Number seven, we're going to ask to table that one.
Oh, yes. Let's go to number seven.
Uh, that's the Johnson Vander Sure variance. Uh, we have a, we've identified the applicant's deficiency in public notice, the mail public notices. Um, that's been brought to the attention of the applicant. Um, we suggested tabling, they agreed with that. Um, if they choose to pursue the variance, it can be re-advertized and readended in the future. But right now, we're asking that number seven to be tabled.
Motion to table number seven, the Johnson Vander Sure variance.
Second.
Second.
All favor eye?
Aye.
Huckabee variance. Who's here to represent, uh, William J. Huckabee? Mickey Whitaker, Whitaker. Mickey, come up please. You have five minutes.
I only need three.
I only need three.
Hi, my name's Mickey Whitaker, and I'm here, Mr. Huckabee couldn't be here, he couldn't get a traveling schedule to get down here. Uh, and he's asking for a variance on the Gulf Trace. Gulf Trace has a neighborhood plan, which is part of the land development code. They have different parking requirements than the Walton County Land Development Code in, in the sense that they require over twenty-five hundred square feet. Once you get twenty-five hundred square feet, you're required to have more parking space, additional parking space, up to twenty-five hundred square feet of four parking space. Every five hundred square feet, after that is one per five hundred square feet. And, uh, I don't know if y'all recall, Dr. Huckabee, we've got a variance here last year, uh, where, uh, because of the plan, he put a, a treatment room downstairs, which is not living area, but irregardless, uh, the house comes out where the, the neighborhood plan would call for eight parking spaces, and we're requesting a variance to get six parking spaces. We do have a support letter from the neighborhood, H O A, for this. Um, the, i- if it was just a Walton County code, it would require probably four spaces, but, so, but the neighborhood plan, we're, we're going to six and, and based on their square footage thing, but he's got building a four bedroom house, uh, there, and, uh, and the big problem with it, here's where the variance comes in, is that the lot is in the coastal Dune Lake zone, so he can only have forty percent of the lot covered with, you know, non-pervious area. So the additional parking spaces would put him, you know, where he couldn't have his, um, pool, which is required for the treatment center, so.
So. Refresh my memory a little bit, was that a hardship is the reason he wanted a variance for the treatment? Was it his, was it his wife, his mother?
Wife, his wife.
His wife was in a wheelchair?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Right. And so, and so, I mean.
We didn't address that parking at the time, I thought we did.
No, not that I, we did it, not that I recall, because, uh, it just came up when I got in there and started figuring in the stormwater, the non-pervious area, and that's when the, the parking issue came up.
Okay, now what are you asking for?
Uh, reduction in the parking spaces from eight to six, based on the neighborhood plan.
And county code would be what?
County code would be four parking spaces, I think. Two spaces for three. Would be four parking spaces with ten.
How many bedrooms?
Four.
Four bedrooms?
Three.
Three.
Three parking spaces with the county.
If it was.
Just the county code, it would be three parking spaces.
Help me out again, and who's requesting a greater amount?
Pardon?
Why? Who is requesting a greater amount? Why?
The Gulf Trace Neighborhood Plan requires more, they were, based on their neighborhood plan, because it's based on a square footage thing, they would require eight parking spaces.
Is that due to the fact that when they rent out rooms, or they won't make sure there's plenty of parking?
I mean, I'm assuming that's why they put that in the neighborhood plan, they did not want, you know, you know, these big rental houses to come in there and only have three parking spaces or whatever, and they'd have, you know, eight cars there for an eight bedroom house.
Is this house going to be used as a rental?
No, it's a permanent residence.
And it's not built yet?
No, no. That's why we're here, is it's not built yet.
Any questions?
And y'all do have the letter from the neighborhood saying that.
Do you have plans for the, the house available?
Well, I mean, I've got these right here.
Yeah, I would love to see those.
Is that the only copy you have?
Yeah.
Didn't you submit those when you came before?
Let's see, they have it though. Yeah, we had the house planned before. And what, got to, we can pass those around.
Mr. Dykes, are we going to enter those into evidence if so, we need to get copies made, right?
Yeah. Would you like to keep those, Mr. Whitaker?
We keep that?
Okay. So we'll make that applicant's, uh, one.
I mean, I'm assuming those are correct.
Pardon me?
I'm assuming they're the correct floor plans, I mean, I don't know if they made any changes to the room sizes or anything, but that's the layout of the house.
Do y'all want to look at these?
Yeah, that can, I had them around.
Mickey, why are there two kitchens in the house? You know?
No, I mean, what, one on the second floor and one on the third floor?
Yeah.
I mean, uh, and I guess he just fixed it that way, but when he does have guests, they'll have a kitchen there.
I mean, the, the ground floor looks like it's set up to be two bedrooms with a Jack and Jill bath in between.
And then that's the wrong plans then.
Well, I mean, two kitchens would seem like a, a rental situation.
Well, I can tell you, it's not going to be a rental. I mean, I must print off some wrong plans there, you know, is all I can say, because we had, y'all should have on record the plans that he's going to be building for the treatment center.
I think we, I think we got to have those plans. I mean, they're, you're in the planning process, so you had to submit something to the planning department.
Well, the county, I mean, they submitted something to the county, the builder, yeah, I wish I, see, I just printed a, printed those off today real quick, off my computer.
So.
And so.
Continuance on the variance.
But I mean, we.
Let's, let's just assume that it's being granted, but it's not a rental.
Yeah, I mean.
It could be part of the variance, if he's willing to do that.
Because, to actual, you know, what we're doing here is the parking. I mean, like I say, uh, you know, I wish I could run back to my office and get you.
Right. Y'all have any plans in the old variance?
Uh, not the plans from the old variance.
Anything else?
But I can, you know, I can sit here and I'm wondering, oh, it's never going to be a rental, it's a four bedroom house, and that's all it's ever going to be.
You know, I have no problem with that being part of the, the variance approval then, right? If that's the concern of the board.
No.
Okay.
So, I'm looking at the, the site plan says for the six parking spaces that you have an impervious service, service ratio of thirty-one point five percent. So two more parking spaces would certainly be less than seven hundred and fifty square feet. And so you, I don't see how you're over the allowable with the eight.
I'm just going by what they, the, the county building department said, I don't know, I mean.
Well, let's listen from the, let's listen to the county, let's see what the county has to say. We give you a chance to come back, Mickey?
Okay.
We can stay here if you want. Well, actually, thi- this property is, um, also encumbered by the coastal Dune Lake, um, standards. So, uh, they, they have the, um, Gulf Trace Neighborhood Plan, um, which is more restrictive, plus the coastal Dune Lakes to contend with as far as to how much improvement they can do on the property. So, that is another consideration of that.
So you're allowed to, you're allowed to develop forty percent of the lot and, and disturb fifty percent of it.
But, well, one, one thing is you got to have the stormwater too. See, that's where the, a lot of it comes in, you got to have room for your stormwater. If, if they would do this, you know, if that's my understanding.
Can you do a, an exfiltration system under the driveway?
I think they're doing one, I believe, I mean, I wish I, the builder was here, but.
Yeah, I mean, you've got more than enough room to put exfiltration under the driveway, but the site plan says thirty-one point five percent, two more spaces is five hundred square feet.
Wow.
You're under forty percent.
Okay, well, let me ask you this then, can you issue a variance stating that building that, well, I mean, he, he, I don't think he would care if it's eight parking spaces, as long as he could fit everything on there, let me put it that way. If he can get his pool, his stormwater, and his parking on there. If he can get his pool, his stormwater, and his parking on there, I mean, you know, that, that's not an issue, but he was, his, when his builder submitted the plans to Walton County, they came back and, you know, that, they said, you know, there was a problem with it, and sent it to, uh, Mark McCain, McCain, who's the builder, and then they worked up some different numbers, and so this is what I was presented to, you know.
Let me ask you this, Mickey, is there a possibility you could get your builder and your owner, whatever, come to next month's meeting, or?
Yeah, but that, that's really, I mean, this thing has just been delayed so long, I mean, I mean, I don't mind doing it, he's gonna scream at me.
Well, now, I'm gonna explain to you something. Now, you know.
Yeah.
We wanna give you a fair opportunity to, to get this thing approved.
And I understand, I appreciate that.
Now, wait a minute, Mickey. But Jeff is bringing up some good points here, and there's a good possibility we'll hear it, if you wanna hear it, but if his, if the points Jeff is bringing up is correct, and, you know, it, it doesn't seem logical to, to make the, to allow the variance.
I know, 'cause I'd rather have somebody that can talk the same language as Jeff, rather than me.
Well, now, you got a choice, you can either continue, we're here, it don't matter to me.
Let's continue it. Let's continue it.
The, the review would have gone to planning, they's talking about not building to verify the, um, the amount of park, uh, parking spaces that there need to be.
Yeah, it's, um, I mean, uh.
Do I now?
Um, when, when Mickey is saying that it went to building, it actually, it went to planning, it came through planning, and that's where it was stopped for the number of parking spaces.
Okay, then explain, explain, explain Jeff's question.
Oh, okay, what?
Well, I understand that they submitted six parking spaces, and you told them they needed eight. Looking at this, they have room to add two more spaces and be under the allowable developed area.
Okay, that could just be the.
Instead of getting a variance, that they would be better off putting in the two spaces for getting a permit and putting the exfiltration under the driveway and moving on.
Well, I mean, and.
Let her answer, she said, she said planning created this problem, let her answer why.
Well, uh, what I'm thinking is maybe that, uh, the, we just quoted the Walton County Parking Standards would only require three spaces. It may be that they, um, put more in.
Well, I thought we did not make variances of, uh, planned neighborhood, that we just dealt with the county. I, I didn't, I didn't think we had the authority to change.
You, you don't, and I think in this situation, and Matt can speak to it, the Gulf Trace Neighborhood Plan, that was actually adopted as part of the county's code, correct?
Yes.
It is a component of the Land Development Code and has the same effect of every other section in the Land Development.
Right, so what hap-
So, therefore, we have jurisdiction to draft the variance.
So, generally speaking, if you had a planned community that had their own covenants and conditions, you would not have the authority to change or amend those. However, for the Gulf Trace Neighborhood Plan, it was adopted at some point into the Land Development Code.
Well, I mean.
Therefore, you have the ability to.
Okay, now Vivian, this is not making sense. It's not making sense that you want, you, you kinda insinuating that you're, you're hanging your hat on it's Walton County, uh, requirements, and Jeff is, has, uh, a, a real good point here according to this.
Well, maybe I'm just not understanding, Jeff, exactly.
So. I think they submitted six parking spaces, planning said, no, you, you're required to have eight, and so they said, well, we need a variance to get six, but all they really need to do is show two more cars on the site plan, and they'll still be under the forty percent impervious surface ratio, so there's no, no hardship.
But can they get eight on there?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, for some reason, and I was only part of the one short conversation on this, the engineer that was working on that, for some reason, he couldn't get it figured out.
Engineer with the county, or?
No, with, with the, working on this site plan.
Okay, then we're back to continuing this November, so you get your engineer, your builder, your homeowner, whoever can explain this.
That's, I guess so, yeah.
All right, we appreciate it.
I don't wanna try to explain it.
I don't think there's a hardship, I think y'all can figure this out, 'cause at, at some point, this, this is a seven-bedroom house.
Of course, it'd be, you know, I mean, for me, you know, I mean, like, parking, you know, non-pervious parking, I mean, you know, I'm, I don't think all parking should be considered pervious. I mean, you can make a non-pervious area, and I would think you could still park on it, but that's not the way the county sees it, it's my understanding, if it's a parking space, it's non-pervious, no matter what.
We're not gonna sell this tonight, we need to move along, we see November nineteenth, motion to, uh, continue November nineteenth.
All right, can I get the house plan again, Matt?
Motion?
Uh, motion to continue it to the November nineteenth.
Second.
All of them, right?
Aye.
That was, uh, who made the, we were talking, I'm sorry. I mean, the motion, Jeff second.
Jeff made the second.
Thank you.
I believe we are on item number three? Kristen Hodges of Randy Wise Homes, is that right?
Correct. I'm not Kristen, uh. Stephen Tatum here, behalf of the applicant, from Matthews and Jones, um, got a package for you guys, just to kinda explain maybe what's going on here, that's the, uh, composite exhibit one. Uh, probably in your package, you have a staff report that says, I believe it hasn't been altered, that says this is a variance asking, or requesting two different setbacks, one that's, I believe, a half foot or something, because of a wall and a patio. That wall and patio's been removed, so the variance request is only for the two feet that the chimney of the house juts into the setback area. Do you have a question already?
Y'all removed the patio and the wall?
Yep. Yep, they did, I thought that was the best course of action, so, that's where we're at. But, um, I'm not sure how familiar you guys are with this, but, um, it was continued from September. Um, building permits for Mr. and Ms. Morris's house were, um, applied or issued back in December of seventeen. Um, in April of eighteen, Randy Wise Homes got a foundation survey done. Um, they do that on all of them, all their houses, just to make sure that they don't run into this kind of problem, where there's a setback issue. Um, I believe that's the survey in the very back of the packet, it's either the last one, or next to last page of packet. Um, it'll be the next to la, or the very last page of the packet, is the April sixth, twenty-eighteen, foundation survey. If you look at it, you can clearly see there's a two-foot jut out for the chimney, and there's also a point six five foot wide concrete block wall that's basically right on the property line. That's the wall that's been removed, and the patio that was attached to that wall's been removed. The chimney, obviously, is not something that can just be removed. So, yeah, the house has already been constructed. This was not, um, this issue was not, uh, discovered until the contractor went to apply for, or request his certificate of occupancy, and he submitted his as-built plans, and that's when they said, well, you're in the setback, we can't give you a CO, you're gonna have to request a variance. Um, stepping back to April in that foundation survey, somehow, the foundation survey was submitted to the city of Freeport and not to Walton County. The development's very close to Freeport, and the employee felt that the house was in the city of Freeport. Uh, Latilda had hired a new, new employee at the time, and she did not realize that the house was not in the city limits either, and she reviewed it for city of Freeport standards, stamped off on it. Um, eventually, if the issue was discovered, and it was sent on down to the county, but at that point, it was just stamped and filed, and there was, nobody really looked at it. So, we didn't know there was an issue until the beginning of August. Uh, once they found out there was an issue, they immediately went and applied for the variance, uh, had their pre-app on August thirtieth. Uh, from that point, you know, they came to the September meeting, and there's only four of you guys here that day, so didn't wanna risk their chances of going forward at that point. So, that's why we're here tonight, since that time, since the beginning of August until now, the, uh, construction loan is, you know, earning interest, and they're paying interest on it, and they're about to lose their rate lock.
Who's your surveyor?
Uh, who is our surveyor?
Is he here?
No, sir, he is not here.
Is it Walker?
No, it's not, it's Panhandle Associates.
Do I now?
Panhandle Associates. Did you have a question about the survey? There's a reason why the house is located where it's at, and, um.
Yeah, why, why did it, why did, why did this, how did this happen, was it a, was it a survey problem?
It was just a, it, no, it was just complete oversight on several people's part. But the reason the house is where it's at, and we still would have asked for a variance had it been back in December of last year, before the house had been started. There is jurisdictional wetlands on this lot, if you look at after the letters, there's a, there's a letter in there from First Florida Bank, if you look right after it, there's a blow-up of the plat, it looks like this, the plat for the subdivision. And I've outlined in orange where the jurisdictional wetland is. If you look at lot number seventy-three, you can see that it, it bumps in a very good distance into the lot, so they pushed the house forward and over in order to avoid that impacting that wetland, and as a result, the chimney ended up in the setback. Now, back in December, we still would have been before you guys asking for a variance in order to do that.
Are you saying you went ahead and done it without asking?
No, sir, nobody realized that it happened until August, that it was even an issue. Like I said, we do the foundation surveys in order to try to avoid this sort of thing happening.
When did you do the sound, go ahead?
I'm under the impression that equipment is allowed in the side setbacks, and that this is a, an HVAC piece of equipment.
It's a chimney.
So chimneys are, are expressly prohibited from being in the side setback.
It's not a piece of equipment, it's part of the house.
And I point out that it is a, um, is your roof overhang is eighteen inches, so really, the chimney's only sticking out, or, I'm sorry, sixteen inches, so the chimney's only sticking out another eight inches or so beyond the roof overhang into the setback, but, I know that's.
But isn't, isn't the whole house in the?
No, sir, it's only a two-foot part, two-foot into the setback and sixty-eight inches wide, that's the only part that's affecting the setback.
I don't guess that makes sense, maybe about the house.
We did have a, um, individual who was concerned about the, the wall, the neighbor in lot seventy-two was concerned about the block wall being there, that's the reason it was removed. So, there is no other neighborhood issues, there's no, nobody crying about, you know, the chimney being in the setback. Uh, there's actually a letter in your packet there from several of the homeowners expressing support for Mr. Morrison, the builder, and, um.
You got two hardships, you got a wetland hardship, and you got a house that could, was constructed in a place that shouldn't have been constructed.
That is correct.
Those are two hardships.
Those are our hardships, yes.
Any questions? Jeff, you quiet tonight, David, I gotta say something. None? We give you a chance to come back, anyone else here that would like to say anything in regards to this? Vivian, what's your position?
Well, staff does not have any objections to, um, if you grant the variance for the chimney, two foot, one inch, and, um, sometimes mistakes are made, and, and if they express their hardship to you, then staff has no objections.
So, it's a definitely hardship. We put that, put your name on it, right? Thank you, Vivian, you wanna add anything else?
Just, um, I did wanna make sure that the, uh, site plan and staff report were moved into evidence, started into the record.
Sure.
But aside from that.
Any questions, anybody has any questions, Jeff, anything else you wanna add, everybody clear, Mr. Burgess? Motion closed at public discussion. Motion closed at public discussion.
Motion to close public discussion.
Second.
Second, thank you.
All of them, right?
Aye.
Motion.
I make a motion to approve the, of variance as presented.
But it just, will it include the chimney only, right, Charlie, is that what you're getting to?
That's what I was gonna get to.
Just the chimney?
Yes, it's strictly the chimney, chimney by its dimensions of two feet ending into the setback and the sixty-eight inches in length.
Is that clear enough, Mr. Dykes?
It is for me, we'll make sure, uh, if it passes, that's reflected, do you wanna a- attach the, uh, survey?
Yes.
As part of the order?
Yes.
Does that be part of what you'd like to do?
Yes, we have a motion as presented, second.
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 Discussion?
Well, I think it's a significant effort to have removed the patio.
For sure.
Uh, I think that shows a willingness and compromise on their part.
Any others discussing?
I think all chimneys should be allowed in the setbacks.
Never know which way you go. That's why I asked you why go, help me, Jeff, help me. We have a motion, we have a second, all of them, right?
Aye.
Second. All right. May, you got your variance, without Mr. Matthews. Item number four. Did we, uh, Mr. Dykes? Playing a, is it, hey?
Yeah, she's got a copy, we, we've all got copies, thank you.
Josh Irvin, wow.
Good evening, my name is Josh Irvin, and I represent the Terrace Development Council.
Oh, we're gonna enjoy this one.
I hope so, I was just talking to the engineer, I think we're going to reclassify our bathhouse as a chimney, so.
Motion to deny?
As you may or may not be aware, the county purchased two parcels in Miramar Beach across from the Moffey Coast Resort in two thousand seventeen with the intent of developing it into a regional beach access. So, in front of you here, I have some visual aids that kinda show the existing conditions from overhead. Um, the house there with the, um, terracotta colored roof is actually on one of the parcels the county purchased. That is where we are proposing to construct a bathroom. Uh, we are here today to simply request some relief from the front setback for that bathroom structure. It's our understanding in the, uh, chapter five of the Land Development Code that we are held to a twenty-five foot setback uh, as a primary, or other primary structure, I think is, is how it's classified in that, that chapter five definition. Um, so basically, what we're asking for there is a twenty, a little over twenty-foot variance for the bathroom facility. One thing to note with that, the existing structure as it is constructed right now is a little less than a foot and a half off of that right-of-way line. Additionally, the, uh, development to the west of that, it's three single-family residential structures, they are sitting at about one point eight to two feet off of the right-of-way line as well. So, our structure, uh, as it is proposed, would be more or less in line with what is already constructed, uh, there on-site and at the adjacent structures or parcels, um, to that development. The second variance that we're requesting is for the interior planting area. Essentially, what we're asking for is relief from the interior landscape island that is required after ten continuous parking spaces, understanding that we have a lot of constraints, uh, with this particular parcel, uh, specifically with the depth of the parcel and the coastal construction line that FDP, FDP has established, we feel like we would lose a couple of parking spaces, and there, therefore, the, the, the public would ultimately suffer from them, so we're simply trying to maximize the amount of parking that we can, at the same time respecting the Land Development Code. We have actually added some additional landscaping area in consideration for that, to try to be equitable. As you can see there, on the far east end, we have a pretty large landscape area. Our total landscaping represents about twenty-four percent of the total parking surface area, so we feel like that is, uh, far in, um, e- excess of, of what the Land Development, uh, Code requires, so. Those are our two requests for you guys to consider, uh, this evening, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to, to answer them.
You gonna tear the house down?
We are gonna deconstruct the house, yes, sir.
You're gonna tear the house down?
Tear the house down.
You're gonna build a bathroom?
That's exactly right.
Which house, the one with the?
The one with the terracotta roof, yes, sir, the, the three-story.
You can't convert it to a bathroom?
No, we, we feel like the existing structure that supports that particular, uh, building is not really what it needs to be. Uh, it was a home that appears to be, you know, constructed and remodeled several times throughout the year, so we just feel at this point that it would be in the public's best interest to go ahead and deconstruct that and build a new structure, uh, that is safe and meets current codes. uh, that is safe and meets current codes.
And all y'all gonna get on that is nineteen parking spaces, is that right?
Uh, unfortunately, we've got, uh, sixteen parking spaces, uh, there along the southern end. Then we have some golf cart parking on the northern end, we have a little loading and unloading area as well.
And this is down where?
This is, uh, directly across from a Moffey Coast Resort. Uh, this is between Zeronimo and Alamo Street, there on Sidney Gulf Drive.
Mr. Burgess, you understand what he wanted?
I certainly do, yeah.
How far is the bathroom pavilion from the adjacent residential structure on the west side?
On the west side, I believe it's, uh, let me look at the site plan real quick.
It says fifteen and a half?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And then?
That's a tie to the property line.
Yeah, that's from the property line, that's, that is correct.
So you have another roughly by scale, maybe three or four feet in addition. So the separation looks to be about eighteen feet, maybe a little one.
Is there a wall that, that separates the, the walkway around that building to give privacy to the adjacent structure?
There is, yes, sir, there's a little corridor through there.
And is that wall allowed to be? I guess that's not in, that's not in the setback, is it?
Correct, it's, it's not on, on our property.
Any other questions?
Yes, I wanted to clarify, is the setback, is the front setback twenty or twenty-five feet? You had stated twenty-five.
It's, it's, our understanding that it's twenty-five feet and, um, the, the reason we, we believe that is our bathroom structure isn't really considered a, uh, single-family residential structure, nor is it considered a multifamily structure. And so in section five, it says all other primary structures, commercials, excuse me, commercial, churches, et cetera, twenty-five feet front with side and rear setback lines conforming to the above mentioned multifamily residential requirements.
Okay, that clarifies it, it's deemed commercial.
Yes, sir.
How many square feet you gonna have in your bathroom?
It's about eight hundred.
Eight hundred square feet.
The, the roof line is, yes, sir.
Same pavilions y'all build everywhere else?
Exactly, this is gonna be modeled after the Santa Clara Regional Beach Access, so that's what it'll look like. Little cupola on top.
Any other questions? We'll give you a chance to come back. Anyone else here to speak for or against? Miss Vivian, what's your thing? You think we're denied so the county would change the code more easier to deal with? That they don't have a hardship? What do you think, Mac? Mac's quiet tonight.
Well, one thing I, I would like to say, you know, Vivian.
Oh, that's quite right.
Is, you will notice that this regional beach access uses a portion of the existing public right-of-way, uh, that's out in front of where they're asking the variance for the structure. Um, half of this parking lot is already in the public right-of-way, so it looks a little bit different than what you might normally see. Uh, because this is a public facility, they're allowed to use that portion of the right-of-way. Um, and because of the extent of this project and the very narrow amount of beach that we've got to work with and the constraints of the DEP and wanting us to push everything as far lumbered as possible, uh, we feel like this would be a reasonable request. And we'd appreciate it if you would consider it such.
Look it up.
Thank you.
I'm not so sure we can take that because isn't there a conflict here? Nah, miss me, not.
Yes, we're all here for the public's interest.
That's right. Any other questions?
Does staff want to introduce? Yes, we could introduce the staff report into the record, thank you.
Slow in it. Josh, do you have anything to add real quick?
The, the only thing I would like to add, we did receive a letter of support from a property owner in a Moffey Coast supporting the structure and the, uh, design that we have, uh, conceptualized here.
Do they know about the huge palm trees you're gonna plant to block their view?
The huge palm trees? No, they, they've only seen the conceptual plan, we really haven't gotten into the landscaping, uh, component of that.
Make sure they're huge.
Yeah.
Big balls.
Sure.
Thank you, Josh. Motion to close at public discussion? Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion? Motion to approve.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Second.
Ah, you messed up, Mr. Henderson spoke. Thank you. We have a motion and a second discussion.
I think it actually falls under the same criteria as the San Roy Road variance. You have the coastal construction control line, you have the coastal protection zone, you have the front setback. They're asking for relief with the same exact thing we granted with it. I don't see any vertical structures within the, uh, setback or right-of-way, so, um, it's not something we haven't approved in the past.
I agree.
And I think that public beach access points are in.
High demand.
High demand and it's such a hot button issue with everybody right now that this is something that we desperately need to take some pressure off of the community and I think it's the right thing to do.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
May? You got your variance.
Thank you very much.
We need something from TDC, we will, we, we, we email you. Nah. Item number five. Blue Vista Building. Who's here for Blue Vista Building? Yes, sir.
I've been in a footer all day, guys.
You been in the footer?
The money boots are in the Jeep and the flip flops are on, so I apologize for my attire.
Hey, not a problem, you're a working man, we'd like to see that. We don't see many of you in here.
Thank you, sir. So we are re- uh, respectfully requesting a variance to basically comply with the design review board's uh, covenants for a platted subdivision of the villages of White Cliffs.
I'm sorry, what's your name, sir?
John Carter.
All right, this is the village of White Cliff, this is, uh... Do you know exactly what you're doing? What lot is it?
It's, uh, lot seven, block D.
Do you have anything else to say?
Is this the same variance that we've been giving everybody else? Can we just make a motion to approve it?
We're gonna, but Vivian, right, come up, come up real quick, please. This is the same one we've been dealing with, that, uh, the village of White Cliff has their setbacks that was annihilated for so many years and in Mark Davis' interpretation was that he had to rassle them so they have to come to court and the county get forfeited, right? Okay, yes. Do you all do a blanket? We can, we've done it.
What? I've been asking to do a blanket for the neighborhood, but.
The neighborhood would have to request it.
The neighborhood has to acquit.
They have to request it, I think they, they have multiple condominiums, um, around them that would make the mailouts very costly. I don't know that they want to push that on all their, um, homeowners, I don't know that there are very many lots left.
So would every homeowner have to?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, have to individually.
Because if I was gonna build in there again, I was going to, uh, approach the, uh, the committee there and ask them if I could do it as a whole. Because I would like to build several more homes and I'm gonna have to do this over and over and over again.
They, the suggestion has been made to them, so.
Let's, 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 go ahead.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I mean, I'm, I'm new and I haven't listened to the other variances, but I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
You're asking for a variance to revert back to what the original subdivision was? Or you're asking for a variance that's even more than that was?
No, I'm asking to comply, I'm, I'm requesting a variance with the county to comply with their covenants that their design review board has already set forth in nineteen ninety-three. And all of the other homes that are in there are built to those, uh, setbacks, the allowable setbacks. And we're requesting to just do the same thing that everyone else is doing.
That, well, that's my question, you're wanting to do the same setbacks?
Correct.
That, that was when it was platted, when it was set forth then, in the documents?
Right.
You're not asking for more than that?
No, in fact, we are inches to the good from what they even have. So they have a one-foot side setback for outbuildings, for instance, and, uh, that outbuilding is mainly garages or carriage houses or something of that nature. And ours is one foot, two or three inches, so we are not requesting anything more than what is, is put forth in their covenants now.
Okay.
Jack? Page number four, page number five, and page number six is from the original plat.
And I read that, and the, the one note in there for outbuilding says refer to note one point nine, and one point nine is not in here.
No.
Okay, so.
And it's a four.
I didn't, you know?
So I would say eighty percent of the homes have been built in there to that, to that setback standard, that's a good point.
We, we never, that one?
I found the same thing as well, and.
So I wanted to know what one nine, one point nine meant, it, okay.
Why isn't it in there, Vivian? We supposed to have a complete package, why are we being this way about, about the county?
I don't think it was the county even trying to mislead. That page, I, I don't know why that page isn't there.
Do you want a copy of that page?
From another, the applicant would, would typically supply that.
Do you want a copy of that page?
I, I was just curious, you know, I mean, I didn't know, but it was, it says outbuildings, the setback, the side setback, it says see paragraph one point nine. Well, your paragraph stopped at one point seven.
I think typically the, the applicant would be supplying that, I've, I've been kind of helping them along
Oh, I, I'm not saying that, I'm just.
And doing a, a copy from one to the next report and, and supplying it in there for them. And I probably just didn't catch that page when I originally made the PDF of that.
Any other questions?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if, and I noticed the same thing, and I went to the public records and pulled the actual page. If you'd like to enter the public record, we can, but it does stipulate a one-foot setback and.
One foot, okay.
Yeah, and a foot, and the alternate being four foot on the side, such that, in my opinion, the site plan does comply.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
And just for your information, it, what happened was in two thousand fourteen, our previous director, Wayne Dice, had made a determination that the county did not, um, recognize any covenants and restrictions that were not, um, part of a, an approved development order. And so therefore, there were quite a few subdivisions that fell into this category of, um, of being established prior to nineteen ninety-six and not having the benefit of, um, a development order that spelled out what their, um, setbacks and so forth would be, so.
Okay.
So therefore, the, they do have to come, some, there have been a couple of.
But it's also, it, it's, it's the interpretation of previous director Wayne Dice. But all the other directors interpreted different. Interpretation Mark Davis is different than other attorneys. I mean, it's all interpretation is the reason we continue to have to do this. I'd like to see Mr. Carpenter interpret it, and he has the authority to do so, that we don't have to continue doing this. Because in reference, everybody that built prior to nineteen, I mean, twenty fourteen, didn't have to. And if they didn't get a variance, then they're in violation, so.
Here's how I can respond to that.
Yeah, I want you to.
Um, I was part of the grand jury hearings and investigation and the grand jury proceeding. Uh, I went through the auditor general investigation, uh, a few years ago also, and I'm still here, and I'm gonna still be here. But one thing that became very clear throughout all of that is if we don't have a clear paper trail to approve something that's outside of what the Land Development Code says, then we have no authority to approve it.
But was this built prior to nineteen ninety-six?
It was built prior to nineteen ninety-six and there is no clear indication that the county approved setbacks beyond what were the standard county setbacks at the time.
And there's, there's, there's no grandfather of the subdivisions that was built prior to that? Is it some of those subdivisions that is accepted prior to nineteen ninety-six?
Yes, and this, this clearly is recorded in public records, so it's an approved subdivision, it's just the plat does not dimension setbacks. The plat does not dimension setbacks, they only appear in the covenants and restrictions. And the Land Development Code is very clear, we have no authority to enforce covenants and restrictions that we are not a party to. That is a contract between two private parties or two or more private parties. Uh, and we just don't have the authority to act on that.
I accept your explanation.
Now, we do have a couple of subdivisions that, um, I think Creve West and Creve East, that the actual dedication on the plat directs you straight to the covenants and restrictions as recorded, um, for those particular setbacks. And in that particular case, because the BCC-approved plat specifically says look there, we can look there. This is not one of those.
There was conversation that this was too expensive to advertise, is, I mean.
No, I'm not, I'm not putting words into the homeowners association's mouths. I mean, there was, there's been conversation, um, that I think they were approached by some of the, um, ones who were wanting to build in there and they just never moved forward with it, is my thought.
Is that?
That there, it, the reason being is because of the substantial amount of, of condos, um, surrounding them and potential expense. But I'm not gonna say that that's their, that is their reason.
The, the other reason could be it's somewhat difficult sometimes to get a group formed as an owners association to come to a, an agreement on a topic of any kind.
Okay. Thank you for your explanation.
Uh, we would certainly entertain a blanket request, uh, authorized by the owner, owner association. If this applicant wants to bring that forward on his next lot and include the entire subdivision, uh, with the agent authorization from the homeowners association, we would absolutely entertain that.
Come, we have done that.
Yeah, the, the issue is since you've got multiple owners, each owner has to do it or they have to agree to have an agent handle it. The HOA would be the only one that would have the authority to, to do it, so.
To speak for everyone.
Right, so the issue would be unless you own all the lots that haven't been developed, you don't have authority to, to go buying those homes.
Next time we just approve it without discussion, okay? Do you have anything else to add?
No, sir.
Okie doke, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close it, public discussion?
Motion to close public discussion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
May, everyone, you got your variance? Next time we try and make it quicker for you, we just. Are you barefooted? He said he looked his boots, I thought he might be barefooted. Item number six. We got one person left here tonight, is that you?
I think so.
I guess you better come up.
Appreciate you guys seeing me, man.
State your name for the record.
Alan Parker with Paradise Coastal Builders, representing our poll.
What you asking for, what you want?
Well, uh, I'm building a house in Grace Point, it's a new subdivision. And as a document you probably got, uh, I have a front stoop. And the front stoop, when the architect designed it, the two steps that are off of the stoop, uh, worked on the plan, but the topography is noted in some of the backup letters I've got. Drops, drops too fast and it actually is going to require another ten inches for a third step for it to work on the topography. This is on a front street of Grace Point, Grace Point is a one-street subdivision with a couple of side streets turning off. It's a, it's about a thirty-lot community. And this house faces the street as you come in. And what I'm asking for is a larger stoop. Uh, the county has allowed three-foot of stoop into the setback. I'm asking for four and a half feet for the actual flat part of the stoop. Uh, we have some architect drawings of the new stoop, uh, which the, the approved plan that we got approved shows the stoop with stairs coming directly to the road. What we have thought would be more aesthetic and more workable for the homeowner is that the stairs no longer come toward the street. We just want to put a larger platform there and the stairs will now go left and right, will keep it back. So, from my overall structure that has been now approved on the plan, comes to five foot, one inch. What I'm proposing, we'll cut it back seven inches from the overall structure. So, I'll be going back into the setback, not out. But I'm asking for a part of that structure that is now only approved for three foot to be approved for four and a half feet for a larger stoop for somebody to, uh, walk up on and have enough room to maneuver. And the stairs going left or right with the front design that we've got on the handrail makes it a more, uh, aesthetic, functional stoop for the homeowner, for the subdivision. And I think we've got letters that approve everybody's in, uh, in this, in the area for the architects involved for the subdivision as well as my architect and the, the owner of the subdivision and the one homeowner that's in there now has all approved it or at least doesn't object to it, thought it had a better look to it. Uh, we also have a financial concern, which is mine, and I have a partner that's not involved in this, sort of a solid partner. And this thing was given to me thinking that the steps would work out, the stoop would work out, and then when I got on the job site, we had a twenty-eight foot crawl space under the house and the street dropped, I realized the stairs weren't gonna look. So, I had done a house, uh, earlier that had the stairs going left or right and it gave it a lot cleaner look, and so I introduced that to everybody and I said, "That looks great, we'd like to see that." So, I needed your cooperation to accommodate the motions inside the structure. But I'm glad that I'm only asking for it to go back in rather than going out, uh, for the overall structure. That's pretty much, uh...
So, your problem is your architect.
The architect messed me up and got me in a situation and the sec...
You think they're too educated?
The second part of that problem is that I was on a, a road trip and the girl called me from the architects and I don't put blame, because I love architects, they do a great job and they've kept me afloat.
Always working.
With, but with my little imagination and the great architects that I've chosen over my forty-eight-year career, I've excelled because of good architects. But everybody's kept possible in making an error, and I think what this young lady did was when she approved the, she got her lines messed up, her, for her setback lines, and she designed the box of the house that the stoop would never work the way she designed it because the setbacks, she was wrong. So, whenever I was on the road, the plan was at the planning department, last stage, after going through all the other apparatus. She said, "Alan, I have an overhang that's only allowed eighteen and we have it three foot." I'm thinking it's a side or rear, I'm not thinking front stoop. And so, the three-foot canopy that actually keeps the water off the people had been reduced to eighteen inches. And when I saw it built, I said, I stood under the area and I said, "Well, let's just buy enough water to drown somebody if it's raining." So, I was hoping that along with the fluency of the deck, the stoop that I could get a, a, a three-foot variant or an eighteen-inch variance for the roof to sort of give it a functional use for the homeowner, long-term, twenty years from now, they can walk up, they won't get wet and the stoop works and it's more functional and more aesthetic for the community. So, that's my hardship and I hope you guys look at that.
So, what are you asking for?
Uh, the stoop to be approved for, from three foot, which is the county allowance, to four and a half foot.
And the side of setback.
And the roof. There, there is no setbacks required, I'm not asking for anything other than the, the only setback that I'd be infringing on is the three-foot stoop going to a four-and-a-half-foot stoop and then, then it stops. We don't have any more stairs going out, the whole unit stops at that point and it's actually seven inches less than what the overall structure is now approved, coming out toward the roof.
And the roof overhang.
And the roof overhang would come out three foot, it would come out eighteen inch more inches to give it under the four-and-a-half foot, I've got six inches of rail. So, I've only got a four-foot stoop from the e- edge of the rail to the front door. So, I give the people ample enough time to stand there and the canopy would come three foot out and that would give them enough canopy to get water off of it.
Ah, just, just hang on a little bit. You asking for a variance from the three foot to the four-and-a-half foot stoop?
That's the stoop.
And you asking for a...
Eighteen to thirty-six inch roof canopy.
Over, over the, the stoop only?
That's correct.
So, you asking for two?
It's all, it's all only on the stoop, this is only the front door stoop, which is, I think it was like five feet wide.
Hey, now, just hang on. You're going from eighteen to three feet.
Right. I think they have drawings of that that show you the, the elevation.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Vivian, what's your thing?
Well, this one, it was a little difficult for me to understand until he showed me some pictures and so forth and I could, um, get a handle on it a little better. I think that if you read the, uh, the request on the first page of the staff report, it kind of explains a little bit better what you're, um, actually going to, would be, um, uh, voting on. Uh, there is one mistake on it that I just noticed, um, at the very, um, last sentence where it says, "An additional two feet into the setbacks," that should say, "An additional three feet into the setbacks." But I just want you to be aware of what you're actually would be voting on and, um, that is a, the Grace Point PUD, front setbacks are five feet and this would be decreasing that to seven inches would be the front setback, so, um, and three feet into the setbacks from the eighteen inches allowed for the LDC for the porch canopy to encroach.
Explain that, explain that five feet, you said five feet is allowed and he's asking for five foot, seven inch, right?
Oh, he's asking for a seven, to, um, uh, reduction from the, well, the, the Grace Point PUD front setbacks of five feet to seven inches, so I just want you to be aware of that's what the request is.
In Watercolor, they, their PUD allows all of their steps to encroach into their front setbacks. Does this neighborhood not have the same, uh, allowance for porch steps? If it's a PUD?
I don't believe so, I mean, I don't have those documents, but, um, that, that should have been, would have been looked at before requesting the variance.
Okie doke, thank you very much. Any other questions? Do you have anything else to add?
No, sir, except I hope you got it approved and I, I'm gonna be a queerer by state views on a house and I just really would hate to see this house go. If that price point on that house had a state bag, I'd appreciate it now, so, for long-term. It doesn't hurt, I mean, it makes the house and everything look better.
You want us to table it for a while? Nah, I miss it, man. Motion to close the public discussion?
Well, one, one second, uh, Mr. Chairman.
In the staff report, is you gonna just...
So, in it, yes, please. Motion to close the public discussion?
Motion to close the public discussion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion to approve, one at a time? The first item he asked for, Mr. Burgess? You understand it?
I do, it looks like we're looking for, to clarify, a reduction from a five-foot setback to only seven inches, seven inches, or therefore allowing a four-foot, five-inch encroachment into the setback, but reducing it, and only over that front stoop.
We can also enter that site plan, attach it to the order, Mr. Bykens?
If that's what the, uh, hit, that's the pleasure of the board.
You wanna go ahead and do that? Or you wanna go ahead and tie the other one, Mr. Burgess?
I, we may as well, um, add in the second one, that we would, uh, grant a variance for the eve to encroach three feet into the setback.
Three foot six, according to the drawing.
Three foot, three foot six inches, three and a half feet. And then, and actually, if, Jeff, if you could help me out a little bit this year, a little bit better to interpret this than maybe I?
Yeah, the, the drawing shows it coming out three foot six.
Okay, I do see that now, excuse me.
So, um, I actually think that, that it should come out just as far as the platform below it, but they're not asking for that.
Well, I try, I didn't want to put a lot of hardship on you, so I'm trying to get by with what I knew.
We're closing.
I would love it if it come on out, it's unframed, so it's up in here, but that's all up to y'all, I'm, I'm, I would be a favor.
We're closing, we're discussing it, if the board would like to extend it, we can. So, if that's what the board's pleasure, you...
Well, I, I think that the line should, should extend up.
I agree.
From the platform to the roof.
I agree, yes.
So, that's your motion?
So, the motion could be that the stoop as well as the roof overhang will encroach...
Four, six.
Four, six.
That's the motion.
Not to exceed four foot, six inches.
That's the motion?
Yes, sir.
Please second it, Mr. Bykens?
Second that, okay.
Mr. Bykens, second it. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close. Got your variance?
God, God bless you, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it.
You had the opportunity to read the minutes, we have, uh, how many minutes do we have here? Two minutes, which is July and August, August, September?
Working on September.
Motion to approve July?
Going both same time.
Motion to approve July and September, August, July and August.
Motion to approve July and August, yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close. Oh, we all ayes tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more item, if, if, um, if I could.
You have one more item?
Yes, we had one item, an application that, uh, came in right before the hurricane. Um, it was intended to be heard tonight, uh, it did not get on the ad, uh, so we're gonna ha- The notices that the applicant mailed out did get mailed out for tonight's meeting, uh, so what we would like to ask you to do is to expect to hear Grove at Inlet Beach uh, on November nineteenth at five PM at the Tveniac Springs Courthouse. Uh, this is variance project eighteen dash zero, 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 thirty-three.
I don't understand, I mean, I don't understand why we mentioned it, why are we mentioning it?
Well, we can't hear it tonight because we did not meet the print advertising.
That's right.
However, a portion of the advertising that went out from the applicant indicated it would be heard tonight.
Right.
So, I think, uh, if we could indicate that it will not be heard tonight and it will be heard on November nineteenth, uh, which will protect the applicant's advertising, uh, and we had one gentleman...
Is he the, is he the applicant?
No, sir, he got one of the notices to appear, to come to the meeting tonight, uh...
So, what you need is motion to continue at the November nineteenth?
Yes, sir, we could do that.
Motion to continue, what item is that?
Uh, this is variance eighteen dash zero, 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 three, three. Uh, the name of the project is Grove at Inlet Beach.
They didn't list it on the agenda.
Motion to, uh, motion to, uh, continue?
Motion to continue variance eighteen dash zero, 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 three, three to the November nineteenth meeting of the Long County Courthouse at Inlet Beach.
Yes, sir.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So, without me, sir, is that the gentleman there?
Yes.
Was that, uh, was that item number seven?
Uh, it would have been item number ten, I think.
Nine. So, what that means, sir, is if you wish to appear, it'll be heard next month in Tveniac Springs.
Okay. Hey, hey, Matt, that, that, uh, the appeal of the one in Grayton Beach, the magnificent Red Bar Properties? Does that fall inside the three-hundred-foot coastal dune lake protection zone?
I can't remember clearly, but I don't think it did.
It's just outside of it?
Yeah.
So, they don't have any restriction on their impervious surface, right?
Only if they, only if they want to avoid having to do stormwater plan. And they're restricted to board it.
Well, they're, they were trying to max out their buildable envelope with that pool area and I just wondered if it was fruitless for them to appeal it because of that.
Yeah, I still gotta go through their actual brief on what, what points they're appealing, uh, but I wasn't surprised that we got it. And, oh, and, and just so we're clear, on, on the last motion that, uh, was passed, I couldn't recall, were we gonna attach a copy of the...
Yes.
The site plan to the order that was, reflect the encroachment? I think there was a question, I guess we are attaching that to the copy.
Absolutely. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Well, Jack, David, what y'all think?
Still shell shocked.
One thing that I brought up, you or your pops up today was...